Hit start.
Good evening and welcome to the December 1st, 2020 Lone Tree City Council Regular Meeting. We will be conducting our meeting virtually this evening in accordance with Council Adopted Policy 20-01. Members of the public are asked to join us electronically. And I will, we are going to wait till 7:03 to allow for folks to join us electronically. So in the meantime, I will give you the rundown on how you can provide public comment this evening. And again, public comment is welcome and encouraged during our council meetings and during any public hearings. There are three ways that you'll be able to provide public comment during our virtual meetings. And first comments that were submitted ahead of time in writing will be forwarded to council and included in the record. If you would like to type a public comment during the public comment portion of the agenda, click the Ask a Question in the sidebar of our virtual meeting and enter your name and address in the message window along with your public comment. Your name and comments will be forwarded to City Council and included in the official meeting minutes. If you would like to speak to council live using your telephone, please indicate that in the Ask a Question box and submit your name, address, and phone number. You will receive a call back from the city to hear your public comment live during our meeting. All public comments should be directed to the City Council, and we ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you. And once again, we are waiting just one more minute, 7:03, to start our meeting to allow time for the public to join us virtually. Okay, we were in executive session prior, so I am going to reopen our regular meeting and ask everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our, there are no amendments to our agenda this evening. It is adopted as published. Any conflict of interest from council, I'll quickly run down. Councilmember Anderson?
None here.
Councilmember Carpenter?
None.
Councilmember Shaw?
None.
And Mayor Protan Brennic?
None.
And I have none either, so we are all good to go there. Again, now is the public comment portion of our council meeting. Again, it is, this time period is set aside for brief comments concerning items that are not scheduled for a public hearing. The council will likely not respond to your comment or question during this portion of the meeting, but we will take your comments and suggestions under advisement, and your questions will be directed to the appropriate staff person who follow up directly with you. There are three ways to enter public comment during our meetings. Again, public comment can always be submitted in advance of the meetings, and your comments will be directed to council, forwarded to council, and included in our record of the meeting. You could also type in your question in the Ask a Question sidebar, entering your name, address, and comment, and those comments will be forwarded to council and included in our official minutes. And you can also speak to council live using your telephone by indicating that in the Ask a Question sidebar and put in your name, phone number, and address, and you will receive a call from city staff to communicate directly with council via your phone. Once again, comments are limited to three minutes. So I will ask if there are any folks that have asked to speak with us over the phone. I'll ask our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see any requests for public comment.
Well, while we allow public comment, I'm going to move forward, and you can still connect with us. I'm going to read through our upcoming events. Again, more information can be found at thecityoflone tree.com and lonetreeartcenter.org. COVID community testing at Campus Credit Union is every day from 8:00 to 4:00 p.m. through December 30th. Visit the city website for more information. Schwager Ranch Holiday Caravan will be happening Saturday, December 5th, and Saturday, December 19th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Schwager Ranch. Holiday Tree Family Photo Sessions will be happening Saturday, December 5th, and Sunday, December 6th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Lone Tree Art Center. Special shout out to the Lone Tree Photography Club, who are doing our great volunteers to help us with those photos this year, and to our awesome Art Center staff. As always, a holiday drive-through experience is happening Sunday, December 13th, from 4:30 to 6:30 at our Lone Tree Art Center. They've got lots of fun in store, so come by for a socially-distanced, safe way to enjoy the holiday season at the Lone Tree Art Center. Virtual Spark Alliance Holiday Music with Marta Burton is happening virtually Thursday, December 3rd at 1:30 p.m. A virtual livestream of Denver Dolls Holiday is happening Saturday, December 5th at 1:30 and 8:30. And virtual livestream The Doop Project, Saturday, December 12th at 6:00 p.m. Surely one of those activities will help you celebrate the holiday season safely, virtually, and you will enjoy it. Okay, Mr. Robb, has anybody asked to speak with council during public comment while I was reading those announcements?
No, Mayor, I still don't see any requests for public comment.
Okay, well then, we will close the period for public comment. We're going to move on to our ceremonial presentations, and this is one, a favorite every year, actually, it's a proclamation for Colorado Gives Day. It's a special day in Colorado. Whereas Colorado Gives Day is an annual statewide movement created by Community First Foundation and First Bank to celebrate an increased philanthropy in Colorado through online giving. And whereas Colorado Gives Day 2020 is a 24-hour period scheduled for December 8th, 2020, that encourages donors to give where you live. And whereas Colorado residents are encouraged to participate in Colorado Gives Day via coloradogives.org, which is a year-round online website that encourages charitable giving, featuring more than 2,500 Colorado nonprofit organizations. Now therefore, I, Jacqueline A. Malley, Mayor of the City of Lone Tree, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim December 8th, 2020, to be Colorado Gives Day 2020 in the City of Lone Tree. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the official seal of the City of Lone Tree to be affixed this first day of December 8th, 2020. This first day of December 8th, 2020. All right. It would not be the holiday season without Colorado Gives Day. I encourage you all to thoughtfully consider a gift to the charity that's nearest and dearest to your heart, and we always like to remind everyone to give where they live. All right, moving on, our consent agenda, which is the minutes of December 17th, 2020, from our regular meeting, and claims for the period of December, excuse me, November 10th to November 23rd, 2020. I'll look for a motion on consent.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Moving on, Community Development, we have a public hearing on Ordinance 20-09, an ordinance amending chapters 16 and 18 of the City of Lone Tree Municipal Code concerning property maintenance and vacant property registration requirements. This is the second reading, and I am opening our public hearing. I'll turn it over now to Kelly First for our staff presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Next slide, please. Staff is pleased to propose recommended changes to our municipal code. Again, these are to address property maintenance issues as well as maintenance issues specifically associated with vacant properties, as this is further described in the ordinance in front of you. And what we're really trying to do here is just be as effective and proactive as we can in addressing property maintenance issues so that we can promote a safe, attractive community and enhance government services and communication. Next slide, please. So the first of the recommended changes would occur in chapter 16, which is the zoning chapter of our municipal code. Next slide. And these have to do with, the first one is an addition of language to our existing property maintenance language that, again, this applies to everything except single-family detached properties, so commercial properties or multifamily properties whereby we require certain things to be addressed in terms of property maintenance. What we are suggesting be added is to specifically address things regarding that the property be free from trash, debris, litter, and graffiti. These are sometimes things that occur on properties, and we think it will be great to have it explicitly addressed within the code so that we can work with the property owners to address those. Next slide. The next language has to do more with the condition of trash enclosures and the operation of trash collection so that we can ensure that these areas are kept clean and looking good. And so, again, presumably, we are designing enclosures for trash dumpsters of the appropriate size and location through the site improvement plan review process. But this additional language will allow us to be, again, very, very clear about then how these areas should be properly designed, maintained, and operated for the longer term. Next slide. So those are the two zoning chapter proposed changes. The next one has to do with proposed change to chapter 18, which is the building code chapter. Next slide. And this is really a brainchild of our code enforcement official Julius Jaco, who is really trying to, again, be very proactive when it comes to, in this case, vacant properties, and trying to address the issues that have or can happen with these types of properties by establishing a vacant property registration program. So the intent is to really, first of all, identify vacant commercial and residential properties to prevent or address property maintenance concerns. Through this process, we will determine who the responsible parties are to address those and really just prevent any property from becoming or remaining neglected or derelict, and to mitigate the blighting impacts of these properties. Next slide. So sometimes problems can occur when properties remain vacant for a significant amount of time. Things can happen, including illegal dumping, illegal camping, loitering, litter, just overall lack of maintenance, or sometimes vandalism. Again, when a property owner is not on site, when the building is not being used, they often become targets for this types of, type of activity. Next slide. Here are some other quick examples of kinds of things that we have been dealing with over the years in Lone Tree relative to illegal dumping or illegal storage on properties that are vacant. Next slide. So the desired outcome of this proposed program is to have a safe, clean, maintained property, promote positive relationships among property owners and the city, and really reduce the amount of time and cost incurred by the city in responding to these problematic properties. Next. So how it would work is that the owner of a property that is vacant would register and pay a fee of $1,000 with the city within 30 days after it becomes vacant, or within 30 days after written notice by the city. And this would be based on specific criteria of what we call evidence of vacancy, and those criteria are listed in your ordinance. The registration then places the property on a vacant property list. The city then is able to perform a more systematic inspection of the properties, and this program would be subject to an annual renewal by the end of January 30, January of each year for as long as the property remains vacant. Next slide, please. The idea here is to really incentivize sort of the outcomes that we would like to see by offering to rebate the registrant if there is participation in what we're calling the city safety program within 30 days of registration. And what this is, is really a collaboration between code enforcement and the Lone Tree Police Department whereby the property owner would agree to enter into a no trespass agreement with the Lone Tree Police Department and post signs on the property saying no trespassing, that there would be no unresolved violations for a year on the property. They would register a contact again, maintain the site plan, and basically address any, you know, issues pertaining to property maintenance relative to mowing, litter, and graffiti removal. So in those cases, we would incentivize the program by rebating 50% of the registration fee, and retaining that $500 would enable the city, again, to cover the costs still associated with inspection and administration of the program. Next slide, please. So in terms of applicability, this program is really intended to address properties, again, that are meeting what we call evidence of vacancy. So these are the properties that are probably remaining vacant for some period of time to the point where it's noticeable, reasonably noticeable to our code inspection personnel, maybe to neighbors, that there really is a property maintenance issue arising as a result of that vacancy. So this registration program would not apply to undeveloped property. It would not apply to property that's under active construction, that has a building permit, nor to temporarily vacant spaces or properties that have otherwise no evidence of vacancy, and would not apply to temporary residential vacancies. Again, so this is not targeted toward the typical resident who is moving in or out of a property and has a home vacant for, you know, a period of time that is otherwise being maintained. Next slide, please. So the recommended changes that are proposed to the ordinance since the first reading are a result of some communication that we received from a representative of the Denver Metro Association of Realtors. And in reading the ordinance, they requested that there be an exemption for vacant residential property that's actively being marketed for sale or lease, and there's no evidence of vacancy. So that's exactly what I just described, is something that, again, the property or the registration program is not targeted towards anyway. So we are recommending to go ahead and modify the ordinance to that effect and exempt those properties. And additionally, we're suggesting a modification to the definition of evidence of vacancy and delete references to what we had previously included were things like if there's an absence of window coverings or furniture and dirty windows with an accumulation of dust, and that sort of thing can, you know, be an indication, rather, of vacancy. However, those are really more subjective things, and we really want to focus on the actual, you know, practical matter of property maintenance where we have clear evidence of that. And so we are very comfortable taking that feedback from the public and modifying that definition accordingly. Next slide, please. So in summary, the proposed ordinance provides, we think, a proactive, transparent approach to property maintenance. It should improve communication with the responsible parties. It is definitely, as I said, an incentive approach through the rebate program, and we think will result in a much more efficient use of staff time with better outcomes. Next slide, please. I'll take questions, and then I have a motion up for you next.
Thank you, Kelly. Before I get to council questions, I want to make sure the public is aware that their public comment period will be happening just after our council questions are completed. So if you are interested in participating live on public comment on this item for our public hearing, would you, you could please start that process now? So when we get the, when we get to the public testimony portion, you're ready to go. And again, I'll remind everyone, if you do want to provide public comment this evening on this item, please indicate that in the Ask a Question box, including your name, address, and phone number, and your request to be connected to council via conference call. So while the public is looking at that, I'm now going to turn back, and I will run through our council members for questions. I'll start with Councilmember Anderson. Questions, thoughts?
No questions, just appreciation that we worked the incentive option into this so that encourage people that may have vacant properties to try to keep them maintained so the city will look good. Appreciate it, Kelly.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Yeah, no, I just, no questions. We've been through it before, but I appreciate you cleaning things up as Councilmember Anderson alluded to.
Councilmember Shaw?
Thank you. No questions, just a comment of thanks for incorporating the public's feedback into our final document.
Thanks. Mayor Protan Brennic?
No comments at this time. Thank you.
All right, thanks. I do not have any comments either. I do want to say, though, I really do appreciate kind of the innovation with our Community Development Department in trying to be proactive about addressing this issue. I think we have all heard comments from neighboring businesses and neighbors where properties have been vacant for a long time and not being maintained, and it becomes a burden on the surrounding neighborhood, whether it's a business neighborhood or a residential neighborhood. So I really do think this, we're excited to see the outcomes of this process. Given that, now I will turn to our public comment portion, and I will ask our city clerk if we have had anyone asked to speak with council this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see any requests for public comments during the public hearing.
Okay. We'll pause very briefly and allow a moment for folks to try and connect if they choose to. And I will let our city clerk know, if you do receive a comment, while we've moved on, I would like you to please, please feel free to interrupt and share that with us, and we can, we can go back and make sure we hear that and include that as part of the record, and it may affect our deliberation even. So since I'm not seeing anything, though, I will ask Kelly to go ahead and put the motion up for council, the recommended motion. Okay, I will look for a motion, then, this recommendation from council.
I move to adopt ordinance number 20-09, an ordinance amending chapters 16 and 18 of the City of Lone Tree Municipal Code concerning property maintenance and vacant property registration requirements on second reading as amended in accordance with revisions presented by city staff.
My second.
Okay, I'm going to pause and check in with our city clerk. Any requests for public comment?
No, Mayor. I don't have any requests for the comment. You can go ahead and close the public hearing if you'd like.
All right, I am closing the public hearing, and I will then look for, I'll, we have the motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Great, thank you.
Passes unanimously. All right. Thank you. Moving on, Public Works Award of the 2021 Custodial Services Contract, and Justin Russell is going to present that again this evening, and he did such a great job in our study session on this. So Justin, looking forward to it.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm here this evening to give you a brief overview of the 2021 Facilities Custodial Service Agreement that I presented at the November 17th Council Study Session. So our current contractor started at the Art Center in 2011 and at the rest of facilities in 2015. We went out to bid to ensure adequate levels of service moving forward and incorporate new technology, and also to make sure we are checking for the best price and service in the market every five years. Next slide, please. Our custodial costs, in 2019, we had an actual cost of just under $151,000. Our projected 2020 cost is $153,000, and our projected 2021 is between $150,000 and $155,000. We also went out to bid on this in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and the level of service changes that occurred this year, and also to give the city more flexibility with their custodial services over the next five years. Next slide, please. We received eight proposals for custodial service. The RFP was for a five-year contract with one-year renewals, and we asked for three levels of service to be priced for flexibility. Next slide, please. So the level of services, we have three levels of service options that the city can change from with a 30-day notice. Our base level, our Level 1 and Level 2. Our base level provides the city with the most cost-effective custodial service. Our Level 1 provides five days a week general cleaning, and our Level 2 service provides six to seven days a week general cleaning. Next slide, please. The RFP was scored on costs, operation plans, work order systems, and additional services. The review committee consisted of six staff members from four different departments, and the proposals that we received ranged from $91,000 to $223,000 per year for Level 1 service. The contractor that we are recommending is environmental, environment control. Their Level 1 service cost is at $101,000, $102,000 per year. They're a family-operated business since 2000 and based in Centennial. They're locally managed and offers an internal work order system. The reason we selected environment control was their triangle of leadership approach to customer service, their internal employee training and recognition programs, and they had great local references that were verified with South Metro Fire and Castle Pines Metro District. A little overview on the contract. Level 1 service cost is of $102,000 per year. Our day porter rate in the contract is at $21 per hour for event cleaning. There is no projected budget increase for the 2021 custodial budget, which is at $150,000 to $150,000 per year for next year, 2021. And also, it's a five-year contract with yearly performance renewals with an annual escalator of up to 3%. Next slide, please. At this time, I'll take any additional questions or concerns that you might have. And on the next slide, I have a, I put up a recommended motion for your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin. And again, great job, and appreciate your thoroughness with the process. I will ask council if there are any question, additional questions for Justin, and so I'll do a quick run through. Mayor Protan Brennic?
No questions.
Councilmember Shaw?
No questions here.
Councilmember Carpenter?
No questions. Thanks, Justin.
And Councilmember Anderson?
No questions.
All right, well, I think you got a, you got us a great deal, Justin, and appreciate the fact that we're not seeing a budget increase. We know in 2020, that is the last thing any of us want. So I will appreciate, we appreciate your good work, and I'll look for the motion from council.
I move to award the 2021 Custodial Services Contract to Environment Control, South Denver Inc., and authorize the city manager to execute.
My second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? We have unanimous approval. Thank you. All right, moving on to our administrative matters. And again, Colorado Gives Day also signals our CBC process and our committees, boards, and commissions, and as much as we like, as we love to see new people interested in engaging with the city, it's, we're saying goodbye to some special folks as well who have dedicated about eight years to serving the City of Lone Tree, and we will certainly be missing them. And I know we wish to, we could be acknowledging Andrew Dodson and Katie Beeler in person, but we can't. But what we have, what we have been able to do is identify some great candidates to fill the vacancies that have been created. So first, we've got Resolution 20-30, a resolution appointing and reappointing members of the Lone Tree Planning Commission, and I will have our city clerk, Jay Robb, introduce it, but then we will turn to the council members who did those interviews.
Jay? Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Just bringing you three resolutions tonight for the Planning Commission, the Recreation Advisory Committee, and the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. And Resolution 20-30 reappoints a current member, Kevin Shane, to his first full term. And we did have one vacancy, like Mayor Malley mentioned, from Andrew Dodson, reaching his end of terms on the Planning Commission. The city did advertise for one month for this opening, and council members Carpenter and Shaw held interviews for that opening, and their recommendation is to appoint Sidney Geyser to the Planning Commission, and I'll defer to the council members to speak to the merits of the recommendation.
So I'll start with Councilmember Shaw. Do you want to regale us with the impressive credentials of this wonderful candidate?
Yes, I, I am never amazed, never cease to be amazed at the quality of the applicant. So although we've chosen Sidney Geyser, it's always a tough decision. She comes with a lot of educational background to support the planning, and I think what impressed me most is when talking about the city's comp plan and zoning and design guidelines, she said, "I really like to read this stuff." So she was very impressive.
Wonderful. Jay, you want to add anything? I know you were involved in that one as well.
Yeah, I was really impressed with Sidney.
Yeah, I was really impressed with Sydney. She's, you know, she has great background, great experience. I think she'll be a tremendous asset to the Planning Commission. So wonderful candidate, and she has a lot of passion around it, and I think she'll, she'll be great.
Great. All right, well, I think we're ready for the recommendation.
I move to adopt Resolution 20-30, a resolution appointing and reappointing members of the Lone Tree Planning Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Moving on to Resolution 20-31, a resolution appointing a member of the Lone Tree Citizens' Recreation Advisory Committee, and Jay, Jay Robb, Mr. Robb, please go ahead.
Yep, thank you, mayor. As you mentioned, Katie Beeler reached the end of her terms with the Citizens' Recreation Advisory Committee. The city did advertise for this opening from October 15th to November 15th, and the council members Carpenter and Anderson held interviews, and their recommendation is to appoint Carol Sorensen to the Lone Tree Citizens' Recreation Advisory Committee, and I will defer to the council.
Wonderful. Yeah, thanks, thanks, Jay. All right, Councilmember Carpenter, who did double duty, had a lot of interviews. Nothing else going on the holidays.
I always enjoy the process, as you know, I really do. I get a lot out of it. Yeah, so Carol, I think we are, we're all familiar with her. She's been a very engaged resident over the years and really brought a lot of passion to it and a lot of insight as well to the interview. So I think she'll, she'll, again, be a great contributor to Recreation Committee, for sure.
Wonderful. Mike, you want to add some?
I would only say that we had two good candidates. Both of them were very interested in the position. I think Jay and I felt that on a basis of qualifications and enthusiasm and organizational strength that Carol got the nod this time, but certainly Dennis was a good candidate as well.
Well, we are fortunate to have a lot of talent in the city of Lone Tree. All right, I think we're ready for the recommended motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 20-31, a resolution appointing a member of the Lone Tree Citizens' Recreation Advisory Committee.
My second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, and finally, we've got Resolution 20-32, a resolution reappointing members of the Lone Tree Board of Adjustment and Appeals. So, Mr. Robb, why don't you summarize this one for us, since we, we were fortunate to be able to reappoint some excellent members this time?
We were, thank you, mayor. Resolution 20-32 simply reappoints Kurt Miller and Jason Margrave to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. We do have one vacancy remaining on the board, and we'll have to advertise and fill that vacancy in 2021, but we wanted to just, for housekeeping reasons, get this resolution adopted this year while we search for that one last member in 2021.
Great, thank you. And we'll look for the recommended motion.
Yes, here you go.
And we'll make the Mayor Protem do some work.
Oh dang, okay. I move to adopt Resolution 20-32, a resolution reappointing members of the City of the Lone Tree Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Okay, unanimous, unanimous approval. Okay, and I know Jay, I know Jay Robb has some other updates for us, and we'll let you get to that, but I, on behalf of the Mayor Protem, and I want to thank the other council members for their great work in, in the interviewing and selection process. We know how hard it is, and I know you enjoy it, but I also know it's a challenge, and it takes a considerable amount of time. So thank you on behalf of the Mayor Protem and I for your good work on the interview processes, but you're not done yet. So Jay, Mr. Robb, why don't you let us know what, what, where we are in the process for the remaining openings?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Just wanted to give the council an update that we are still searching for one vacancy on the Lone Tree Arts Commission, on the Audit Committee, and, as I mentioned, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. So we'll leave, you know, leave the application process open and see who, who submits in the coming weeks and hopefully interview towards the beginning of 2021 to, to get those vacancies filled. We did make plaques for all of our outgoing members and letting these, these boards kind of honor the, the years of service that each of them have provided. And so it's kind of an old tradition that we're still maintaining even during these uncertain times.
Thank you, and I think it's just a small token of appreciation, but we do want to acknowledge the great work by all of the folks that have served the city so well. So with that, we are, our regular council meeting has been concluded except for our council comments, and as we start the holiday season, I think it's appropriate to give you guys a chance to just say a short, whatever you want to. So let's just start with Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, mayor. What an unusual year, and congratulations to the staff for helping us through a very difficult time, particularly, you know, hearing Jeff talk tonight about the winner chair program and the hard work that people have done to try to keep our businesses active in the community, keep our restaurants going. What a tough year. People have really been creative and helpful and tried to keep our community whole. And with that, I'd say I hope you all enjoyed your Thanksgiving. It was certainly different for us, and wishing everybody a happy holidays as we move towards the Christmas holiday.
Thanks, Mike. Councilmember Carpenter?
Yes, I'd like to also acknowledge staff for another tremendous year as we're wrapping up this year, and hate using the word pivot, but we have seen everyone do that certainly this year and adjust to the craziness that we're, we're living in right now. And I also would like to acknowledge, just because we, we just went through the whole process of the boards and commissions, to acknowledge all of those who do participate in the city officially and unofficially, as well as the first responders and the police department. So there's so many people to thank, but truly, everyone who is involved makes our job as council members a lot easier. So thank you, everyone who is out there listening or not listening, but still contributing.
And Councilmember Shaw?
Thank you. I would echo the comments of the two council members who spoke before. I would simply add that I am very grateful to live in a community like this where citizens, staff, our first responders are so giving, and our businesses are, continue to strive for success, survival. And that concludes my comments. Happy holidays.
Thanks, Lynn. Okay, Mayor Protem Brennic?
I would just echo what everybody else has said. I am very grateful as we hit the, the holiday season to be safe and at home, and at the end of a very strange political year as well, I would say that I, I look back at the year and feel a lot of gratitude for being part of this particular council with this particular staff in this particular city. I think that we can all agree that we find ourselves in a political environment that doesn't have very much politics involved at all. So I'm super grateful for that, for the people that I serve with and the people who I serve in this community, and I really wish everybody a, a super safe and happy holiday.
Thanks. And again, echo my gratitude and appreciation to each and every one of you. I think in a very challenging year, I think we are very blessed in the city of Lone Tree, and that I think we can all acknowledge that there are some things that we are very, very grateful for, even in 2020. And it may just be that 2020 is almost over. We're all so grateful for that. So I, 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 I'm going to just go out on a limb and say, we're not going to be doing council comments at our, at our December, at our second meeting in December, because we've got a very hefty meeting, and I know we want to go out and enjoy the holiday cheer. So I just want to say my eternal thanks to the four of you. Kathy said it beautifully, I am so grateful to sit virtually alongside you guys and work with the amazingly talented, dedicated staff, serving the resilient, talented, thoughtful community, residential and business community that we have the privilege of, of serving. And so with that, I want to wish you all a blessed, safe, healthy, happy holiday season for you and your family, and get ready, put your seatbelts on, because our next meeting is going to be a long one. We're starting early, but, and again, my eternal thanks to each and every one of you. So with that, we are, we are adjourned, and council comments are concluded for 2020.
Good night, everybody. See you all.
Good night. Good night, guys. Thanks. So, hey, hang on one, one second. I just want to make sure everybody's.